6:30, I called this meeting. Manchester's Friends of Trees Board. Brian?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
John, yes.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here who has... Yes?
I do.
Okay.
Does that surprise you?
No!
Bang, yeah.
I wanted to relay a story, very quick one, that a friend told me. She'd been out walking and decided she needed to bring a credit card on this nice, long walk, because you never know. She got home and the credit card was no longer on her person. So she scoured everywhere, couldn't find it, but decided just to wait a little bit before calling the credit card company. A little while later, there's a knock on the door, and it was the police. Somebody had found the credit card, gone to the police station, turned it in, and they delivered it to her. But she did have to prove she is who she is. But I just thought...
That's community policing.
That's community policing, and that's a wonderful, small community. And somebody turned it in.
Yep.
And the police...
Got it to her.
Got it to her. I just thought that was a really nice story.
Yes. That's all. Is there anyone online who knows?
My concern is the battery, that it's going to quit on me, so I'm going to check it every now and then.
Okay. Good luck.
Becky.
I think that's my parents. Mom?
Hi, Becky.
Hi, Dad. You might want to mute.
Okay. That has kind of taken a surprise out of the chairman's reception. This is...
Who hasn't seen that?
Becky's last meeting, at least in this term. I hope it will not be the last we've heard of her. She has been a terrific member of the Board of Selectmen. She's always prepared. She knows how to mute her computer, which is something I've never learned. She keeps track of people who have their hands up. But most important, she is completely unafraid to say what she thinks, whatever else anybody may say. So, here's to Becky.
Wow!
Can I have that chip back there?
Please.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you.
These are beautiful.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, that's why your parents were probably really worried.
I think so, too.
Try this on. Try it on.
Only if my legs can sweat. This is perfect.
There'll be a spot in the house.
Becky, you've got to sit down again.
No photobombing.
Thank you.
Wow, thank you all very much.
Six years on the Board of Selectmen, including a year of more or less involuntary chair, which she handled with grace and warmth, and nine years on the planning board, which is... Thank you very much.
She needs to have a chair.
I would like to say that this has been probably one of the most amazing experiences I've had, and I cannot recommend it enough. It's... I know that I've gotten so much more, and I'm sure many people might think I gave, but it's taught me a lot, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to have been able to do this.
So, little mom and dad.
Hi, Mom. Hi, Dad.
It's like if my parents called, that's going to be a long-distance phone call.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you all. That is just very dear, very unexpected. But, oh, my God. Hello, Carol.
Hello.
I would like to acknowledge the person who got me into everything in town. Carol Cabbott. Well, you might applaud her, or you might not.
Well done.
That... The next thing we ordinarily do is go over the action items. Sorry for it to go from the high to the low, but is there... Are there any action items that we need to add or move? Okay. So, the action items that we're taking up today are the hypermeters' offices and bathrooms, hypermeter classification, and the North Shore Regional 911 Rescue. But, the first thing on the agenda is a public tree hearing. And a tree hearing is part of Manchester's protection of our shade trees. Shade trees are important. And the goal of the hearing is to protect trees. And this is part of Chapter 87 of Mass General Laws, which is very long and sets out the procedure for when a public tree can be removed. And the rules on what is a public tree are in our tree plan. So, we start with the first tree that we're going to discuss is 6 to 8 Bridge Street, which is... Yes?
I'm Anne Jewell, and I own the house at 6 Bridge Street.
So, just before we go, we just need a motion to open up.
Yes, we need a motion to open up the hearing.
I'll make a motion to open up the hearing.
All in favor? Brian?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
I want to give you a little history of that, brief history. In the 5th of February in 1991, there was a petition to remove that tree. At that time, it was a 12-inch in diameter tree, but a letter from Holland Emsley and the assessment of the Boston Arboretum said that that was the wrong tree to be planted there because ultimately, the tree would press against the retaining wall and the future parking platform. Bob Maroney, the director of the DTW at that time, spoke about against the removal of the tree because regardless of the advice of the experts, he said the species generally grows up rather than wider. The petition was denied. I have here the Board of Selectmen's notes, which I will give to you, and the letter from Holland Emsley. And in 2001, we wrote a letter to the DPW, said the branches are hanging over the parking area and the roots are pushing up the sidewalk. In February of 2005, we wrote a letter to the Board of Selectmen requesting the tree be removed because significant buckling in the pavement and cracks are starting to appear. The tree is interfering with growth of trees at 6 Bridge Street property, and we have a letter and the photos for that, which I will give to you. Now, today, we come to 52024. The tree has to be removed. I have pictures of what it looks like. More importantly, the root has to be removed because some of those roots have now pushed against the retaining wall and the parking platform. After the root has been removed and the tree has been removed, hopefully we will agree to that, we're going to get in a structural engineer, and hopefully, if there is damage, we will have to tell... The town will have to be accountable. So, it looks like the arboretum and the Holland Emsley back in 1991 were correct about the tree. Let me just give you these so that you will see. I only made two copies. I didn't know how many that you would need. But you can see that this has gone on, that we have pictures, and this is what it looks like today. So, they're all... And this is from the Board of Selectmen's meeting the first time until now. So, the tree is a hazard both to the parking platform, the retaining wall, and to the sidewalk.
I think it's important to note that the...
Name, please? I'm sorry, you need to give your name and address.
Okay. I'm Kai Jewell, husband.
It's... No, you need to give it for the record. That's just what we have to do.
Kai Jewell. And I think that if you saw the way that the tree, the roots had humped up the sidewalk, it's pretty noticeable, let's say, pretty significant, the safety as it is. Pretty difficult to... Little baby carriage along the sidewalk, that portion of the sidewalk. To me, it seems like a no-brainer to remove this obstacle.
Plus, the tree is dying.
The tree seems to be dying.
Yeah, you can see the lumps.
Is the tree working?
Yes.
Tom, yes?
Yes. Please. I'm sorry, I should have recognized you, but...
That's okay. I'm sorry. I'll be here.
What is your opinion on the tree?
We spent considerable time pruning the tree. I stayed there for the whole duration, directed the man. We did what we thought we should do for the best interest of the tree, taking into consideration the property owner's concerns. I can only address the concern... I can't address any structural concerns. That's not my expertise. But the tree is far from dying. Very healthy tree. I pruned it in the manner that I would do to extend the tree's health and life and vigor.
Would the Friends of Trees like to speak to this?
Well, I confer with Tom about the tree.
Do you need to identify?
I'm sorry, I need to identify. Jody Morris, 11 Jersey Lane. Thank you. Head of Chair. So, I confer with Tom about this because he's the tree expert. I volunteer to look at trees and measure them and so forth, and I believe that this is a pin oak. And my understanding is generally... Tom, tell me if I'm wrong, the roots are very deep generally with oak trees, which would be suitable. I understand the arboretum said that this was not a suitable tree. But it was pruned extensively last December or January, I think. And I understand that we've got before and after pictures, and it was overhanging the driveway and the street and everything. It's now been pruned up, and it's quite a manageable, you know, size and shape at this point. And my feeling is that having a heaved sidewalk, from our standpoint of trying to protect and preserve trees, we would be taking down a lot of trees in this town if a heaved sidewalk was the main, you know, criteria to use. The sidewalk should be repaired, and we can do that. We've done that with other trees. We've repaired the sidewalk so it's not as lumpy and exposed some of the root color of the tree. But the tree seems very healthy, and I think that Tom's feeling is that it should be retained.
Is Chuck Damm available?
Chuck is on the call.
May I say something here?
Let me go through. You have each had a chance to speak. I'm going... Chuck Damm is the head of our Department of Public Works, and he's the person who could speak definitively on the sidewalk.
Hi, Chuck Damm, DTW. Yeah, the sidewalk is definitely, you know, heaved in certain areas from the root system of the tree. I actually talked to Foreman about it today as well. I guess there used to be a lot of willows along Bridge Street, so there may be additional root systems from the willows that were taken down previously. So, you know, we can open up the sidewalk and take it out. To do it right, we would typically plane the roots, and so depending on, you know, the root system and where it is, you know, maybe more or less of the root system has to go to get a level plane for the sidewalk itself. We'll say it doesn't appear that there is 36 inches of clearance between the back of sidewalk and the back of tree. So, it will be definitely a pinch point when you consider ADA compliance and things like that. But, you know, it's something that can be done. It's just something that will continue to need to be done if we leave the tree there.
Mr. Henderson, one more thing. If it's an oak... It's a particular pin oak. Do they typically have shallow roots?
Well, what you have here is you have the buttress of the tree. Those roots in the flare, they will continue to enlarge and expand. By nature, its roots are deep, but that's a normal occurrence when you put a tree like the representative Friends of Trees stated. We have that going on with any tree that we planted. I do agree with the arboretum's assessment that it may... I wasn't involved in planting this tree. It was probably planted in the '70s or something, probably by Friends of Trees. I'm not sure, but I wasn't really involved in it.
My real...
It was planted in the '90s.
In the '90s.
Yes.
The essential... The essence of my question is, would planing the roots to make the sidewalk level do serious damage to the tree, in your opinion?
I'd like to look at it again, really. I mean, I can't really... I have... We do have... Once the asphalt was removed and we saw them, and the asphalt was cut nice and neat, we'd have a better opportunity to examine how much you do.
There's the parking platform.
We have done it with success with the locust trees downtown. It is a very narrow spot. I agree with Chuck. To my memory, there isn't 36 inches between the trunk of the tree, and I think there's a metal railing fence before the big drop-off in the wall. But probably at the time, a different type of tree would have been better. A lot of... We didn't have a lot of, you know...
Yeah. It's hard to change the past.
Yeah, right. We learn by mistake sometimes.
Questions from the board?
Question. Tom, is there any safety issue at this point with the tree?
Not at all.
Okay. And Chuck says, so far as the sidewalk is concerned, planing can be at any level. When you say planing, you can plan half an inch or an inch. It depends upon what you want to do. Chuck could repair the sidewalk, but put a carve-out for that. Is that correct? Is that the intention?
I don't know because I haven't really talked with Chuck about it. What we're talking, I think, about is, I don't know what his minimum requirement for the width of the sidewalk would be. So, until the... Like I said, it's hard for me to assess it without seeing... I know generally what I expect to see there, and I think we could plane the roots off on that side of the tree. Certainly wouldn't affect its stability, if that's what you mean, of the tree falling over or anything like that.
Well, there's a concern there. The more you cut, I suppose, I suppose it affects stability. But, you know, if the tree stays, we're going to be back where we are in 10 years. It's going to grow.
That's a possibility.
It'll continue to grow. Okay.
Becky?
I... The pictures the homeowners submitted regarding the cracks in the pavement, it's hard to know what those come from. And I think that when we look around at our town and what makes it... Gives it the feeling that people all say they want to maintain, it's the character. Part of the character is definitely the buildings, but it's also the fact that we have a lot of tree-lined areas, streets, sidewalks. And I think that unless a tree presents a very immediate problem, I don't see that we should just be taking down healthy trees.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just a question regarding... I guess this might be for Chuck. Aside from the sidewalk, do you see any issue with the retaining wall?
Yeah, to be honest, I haven't looked at the retaining wall, so I'm not 100% sure about the integrity of it.
So, my feeling is, I think it's a very healthy tree. I walk by it frequently. I think the sidewalk is manageable. However, if there is a concern about the retaining wall, I would like to know that before we decide to permanently keep the tree. I haven't seen any evidence one way or another, and to me, that's a deciding factor.
May I just... I'd like to hear from everyone on the board first.
I think it looks like a healthy tree. Looks like it can be managed. My only concern would be the ADA compliance. That's the only concern I have. But as far as beyond that, I think it's worth doing the media work that Chuck and Tom have been talking about.
I think you heard... Yes, please, go ahead.
Speaking of the retaining wall, one piece of the wall, one stone is already pushed out, I'd say about four or five inches, and we've lost some others. Plus, the cracks in the parking platform. And we were told by the tree company that it is not a healthy tree.
Thank you.
Which tree company? Would that be Madam Selectmen from you?
Yes.
I'd like to know who the tree company was, and told them it was not a healthy tree.
The people who pruned the tree told my stepdaughter the tree was not a healthy tree.
I was there for the whole time supervising that pruning, and I would be very surprised at that young man. He's very qualified, excellent. They would consider that not a healthy tree, but I'm willing to speak to him about it.
She's not here tonight, but I'm sure she would.
This is a back-and-forth that we need to stop. Thank you. Under...
Peter Madsen.
Peter Madsen, okay.
Can I just say one thing further, not in general with all the policy on the trees? What we feel we should have in the future, when a person comes in to present an issue with a tree and says the tree company or so and so and this, and we would like to see that and know who that is and see if they're qualified. I know most of the tree companies and most of the arbors on the North Shore personally, and I can assess the situation better if I know who's making the statement that it's not a healthy tree.
Thank you. Peter Madsen? Yeah, thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Peter Madsen at 5 Wood Home Road in Town. I drove by and gone out and tried to look at the tree closely today. Walked by, and the tree has a beautiful, healthy canopy. The tree is definitely a healthy tree, and it would be a real loss if we lost that tree, especially because it's showing the very first tree that begins on Bridge Street on that side, and it's in great condition. It's remarkable how healthy the tree is being right next to the road. That's also the case, but it's a tree that really needs to be maintained. Thank you.
Before you go, I think we need your street address.
5 Wood Home Road.
Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Becky? Welcome.
I, like Kathy, regarding the issues with the retaining wall as well as the driveway, I think that things freeze and thaw, and freeze and thaw, and they move. So, I don't... I think it's important that we, before we go taking down a beautiful tree, we need to determine what is actually causing the problem, if it's the tree, and then we can address roots and go from there. But I think it's not responsible on our part to remove the tree at this point.
Any further public comments? Is the board ready to vote? There... I guess we don't have a specific motion for this. Is there a motion to keep not to remove the tree at 68 Bridge Street?
Some vote.
Second.
Further discussion? Brian? The vote is not to remove. Yes is not to remove.
Yes, I vote not to remove.
Kathy? Anne says yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. You... Mr. Henderson, you will look at the tree and the roots, and you and the DPW will work on the tree through questioning the driver of the sidewalk.
Very surely.
Great. Thank you very much. The next tree is at 49 School Street.
49 School Street. We have pruned the tree a little bit at the request of the owners, I think, probably last fall or last winter. It's a pretty large, mature red oak. It appears, we're not certain, but I think the owners told us it was struck by lightning. They removed a large leader from one side, which made a large scar on the side away from the road, which you can't see. It has... This is a tree that I did not supervise the pruning. They went and pruned it a little bit while I was away, certainly not to my specifications of what I would have done. There is a large limb out over the roadway on it. It has what we call a flex stress crack in it. It is the... I would recommend the removal of that tree and giving the tree an excellent pruning. The injury on the inside of the tree appears to be walling off and closing off nicely. That indicates to me that it's also a very healthy tree. Removing this and balancing the tree off certainly give the tree...
Removing the limb.
Right, because they are heavy with it, certainly give the trees a chance to compensate and balance off on the other side, which is a normal thing that they do. And it's a lovely tree, quite healthy. Unfortunately, it may have been struck by lightning. I'm not sure of that, but what we like to see is that closing off nicely as it is after a severe injury like that.
And from the Friends of Trees?
Thank you, Jody Morris. Tom and I have discussed this. I actually went and looked at the tree and measured it today in that room with the homeowners, and she's very concerned about, you know, that there's dead wood in the tree, and obviously this limb that's cracked is very concerning, and it's also tangled in electrical line. Kind of amazed that North Shore didn't have it pruned already. But in talking to Tom, I think the idea of taking off the two large, not just the one that has the crack in it and then another one above that also goes out over the road, and really having, making sure that Mr. Henderson is there for the pruning, I think that this would be a lovely tree. It is a beautiful northern... I believe it's a northern red oak. It has a 35-inch diameter. It is huge. And I think that I want to make sure that the homeowners feel safe with this tree, but it needs some major pruning. It needs thinning out of the crown. It needs dead wood coming off. It needs those two yards of large limbs. I think it's worth doing and saving this tree because it's a beauty.
And we specifically brought some examples of the tree we get on Bridge Street. The same thing could be accomplished with that tree I bought for the homeowners.
Not from the only homeowner.
Pardon me?
Yes, there's just one homeowner.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Everybody keeps saying homeowners.
I don't know. Homeowners, homeowners, whatever. My wife and I own house jointly, so...
I'm just a simple person.
Yes, I would like...
All right. So, Christina Nahad is there at 49 School Street, and the tree was struck by lightning. Half the tree is gone. In fact, when the tree was struck by lightning, we lost a car. We lost the shutters at the side of the house. We lost the screen. We lost the fence. So, it wasn't just a little portion of the tree that was lost. As I said to Jody and Marlene today, I am very concerned because I've called DPW so many times because of big limbs. We're not talking branches, but big limbs that come off of that tree and continue to come off that tree. And, you know, my number... I know that your number one priority is preserving the trees. My number one priority... I love nature. I love trees, but my number one priority is safety. And I've had people stop as they're walking by and saying, "What are you going to get rid of that tree? This is a dangerous tree." My sister, who is at 47 School Street, had a tree surgeon come for her tree, Buckley Tree had a tree surgeon come for her tree, Buckley Tree Surgery, Tree Surgeons, and he parked in the driveway, and he wasn't even supposed to look at my tree, but he said to her, do you know who lives next door? That tree is a dangerous tree because of the big crack. So every time there's a storm or bad winds, I do get, I get a little bit nervous. I have a grandchild now, and I mean, there are plenty of people and grandchildren in the neighborhood that walk by. I just, it is, it's maybe because I saw that tree split in half and saw the damage and what it did. It just makes me a little nervous. And in fact, there's even, I showed it to Marlene and to Jody, this is branch that's stuck in one of the lines, which is separate from its, it went over like, you know, way across the lines. And when I walk down School Street, across the street, because I'm worried that that's going to come crashing down, it's just stuck in the wires. So it's safety first, that's my concern. If you could make the tree guarantee that it's not just going to be this half tree without those limbs, because if you go around to the back of the tree, you see that it's just a half a tree. Literally.
Questions from the board? Becky?
I just want to address one of the comments. Our priority is not trees. Our priority as a board is the town and the welfare of the town. And I'm sure that's what you meant.
Well, what I meant was when Anne had said about here, because our number one priority is preserving the tree, so that was, that was a reference to.
So anyway, I just want to make sure that that got addressed.
I was quoting from state law.
Yeah, yeah, no, that, I was just wanting to make sure that it wasn't mistaken as our priority. I think that in terms of promising safety, we can't promise that someone's going to walk out of their house and not fall. We can't promise that a tree branch won't fall. There are many things we can't, but we can work to make sure a tree is properly maintained as best we can. If we were to just take down trees because everybody's worried, we would have no trees left, and we wouldn't. So I think that we should listen to what the tree warden suggests and prune the tree up to his specifications. And I would agree, I think we do need to have, if someone is going to quote from an arborist or from a tree company, we need to have the information of the company. And also when the commons, when they looked at the tree and when the commons were made. Thank you.
Chuck has his hand up. Chuck has his hand up.
Yeah, I just want to say a couple things. You know, we've actually been there twice to prune this tree. So, you know, we understand that there are ongoing issues, and the reason that it had a light pruning at first was, one, because Tom wasn't there, but also, two, because of the wires. And so we really need to rely on National Grid when it comes to working within the wires. And so I just want to make that clear, that's, you know, also part of what's going on with this tree.
Is it possible, Chuck, for the DPW to get in touch with National Grid and request that they do the pruning?
We certainly can. It would be very hard probably to have Tom there at the same time they are and vice versa, but, you know, we can do our best. And then I would just say that, you know, Tom might agree or disagree with this comment, but I would say the touch that National Grid and their crews usually have with the trees is much less than Tom.
Perhaps we could arrange, there's a general pruning and the specific limbs that are involved with it. Yes?
I did call National Grid about, because somebody had said they should, you know, maybe they'll help you out, and they said that they couldn't help me help you. So, I mean, perhaps if, you know, the board spoke to them and somebody else besides the homeowner, maybe they would.
They do prune very much.
But which?
Yes. I'm sorry, I don't.
Claire.
Claire.
Oh, I'm sorry, Claire Leggett, 87 Bridge Tree. I have taken down large trees that were threatening my home, so I understand that concern. But one thing that I am also concerned is the brook, the brook tree right there. The flooding of the brook I've seen over the years. But a tree of that magnitude would be absorbing a lot of water. And I don't know if that's too abstract a concept, but the idea that that tree is functioning to help us manage water.
Thank you.
Peter. Peter Manassion is on.
Peter Manassion first.
Yes, Tom.
I think the problem there with National Grid is they own that pole, but those are communications lines, so it's not an electrical line, so. And they lease their poles out. I'm not sure, but I could tell by looking at, if it has the encoded number, but they're not going to prune it to our standards for one reason. And as I say, I brought the picture for the homeowner to see what we can accomplish if we really want to. Such a magnificent tree, like the one adjacent to it on the other house property, we were able to say that somewhat return the responsibility over that to the homeowner because they wanted it. But it can be really, this shows a before and after. It's an X and I, actually, we wanted to select the board to look at this too.
No, 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 bring it up and we'll pass it around.
Yeah. That whole limb will come right out.
That was a concern of Buckley.
Yeah. It's a concern of mine when I saw it initially, and I wanted to be there.
It's nice that you're chatting, but I would really prefer that it comes to me. Sean?
Yeah, so, Tom, let me speak to Tom. If you remove those two front branches, and I assume you've got a photo that, a Photoshop deal there or something?
We have a picture of the injury in the.
But the injury is in the back.
Yeah.
But you consider this to be a safe situation if those two limbs in the front are pruned to your satisfaction?
I think good pruning and thinning of the tree, the tree will be safe for many years.
I'm looking at, those are big limbs, they're foot across.
Yeah. We'll put it much more in balance, yes, by lightening that side, as to the side.
Not lightening.
Lightening.
Reducing the weight on that side. Peter Manassion, please.
Hi, Peter Manassion, Five Wood Home Road again. I just want to say, Mr. Henderson just mentioned about the tree that's about 15 feet to the side of this tree that was worked on. If you stand back and look at those two trees, the trees in question tonight, and the tree that Tom mentioned, that's in the neighbor's yard, they are twins. I would defy anybody to tell different species. They've got wonderful canopies, and they're, they're in great, they're just two of the same, actually. The other mention about Buckley, I don't know Buckley, but I would want to know whether or not they have certified arborists on hand or not, so that we know what their certification is. And the, that one leader that was referenced, that was struck by lightning, you don't really even notice unless you really look at it, and the tree isn't even fully out yet. That can be easily dealt with, and it would not be, something that would be present. So that's everything, it's tree-esque, worth holding on to, and a beautiful, big, mature tree that's got many years left. Thank you.
I think, I think we have, I think, unless someone has new or different information, and I do understand the two trees were not twins, that one of them was planted by your parents.
No, no, they're both town trees.
Okay, I thought one of them was.
No, it was not, the one that we did, it was not determined to be a town tree.
They were both town trees the same time.
You know what? We're not supposed to have sidebars, conversations are supposed to be with the chair. And that's just the way we're supposed to do it, our open meeting.
So is there a motion to deny the request to remove that tree?
So moved.
Second.
John, have I cut you off completely?
No, 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 I had my comment. So I'm good.
Okay. Brian. Yes? Yes means not to remove the tree.
Yeah, I need more notes. Yeah, yes, I vote not, here we go, yes.
Becky, yes? Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes.
John says yes.
Okay, thank you very much. The next tree is at One Highwood. Jody?
Sorry, can I just make an addendum comment? I think that, I think the, Christina would probably like to hear that the denial has happened, but with the mitigation.
Yes.
And so the mitigation that was reported for the minutes, that mitigation would be.
The removal of the two limbs that come out over the street and are tangled in wires.
And any further cutting back dead wood and shaping and really getting the tree would be backwards.
Thank you. And Debbie, you will. Okay.
Do we need to put that on the list to follow back up as to when that gets done? So that.
Thank you.
That they know when it'll be done.
Debbie, we'd like to have an action in about six weeks.
Yep.
To check up on the pruning, that the pruning is scheduled.
Okay.
And if I might, unless somebody has any other reasons to not do so, I would recommend that we approve the removal of the other three trees. One at One Highwood, one at 59 Forest Street, and one at 95 Pleasant Street.
I have a question on the one at Highwood. But why don't we take a motion to remove the trees at 49 Forest and 95 Pleasant? Fifty, yeah, 59 Forest and 95 Pleasant. So moved.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
What?
Just stress the comment that because the trees are virtually dead.
On the recommendation of the tree warden. Okay, I'm sorry, Brian, you've said yes?
Yes. Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Tom, what can you tell us about the tree at One Highwood?
The tree at One Highwood, to my recollection, about five years ago, maybe 10, lost one half of it.
Yeah.
It snapped off at about 20 feet up. And we removed, we came down, the town cleaned it up, and we flushed it off at its base as best as we could. That side of the tree, the remaining cut on a double leader, big pine like that, is deteriorating, there's a rot there. It's hard to tell if that rot from that inclusion where the two trunks met each other, if there's any issue going on there without going in and doing warrants of tree evaluation. The homeowner's concern is, I think, that they're afraid the tree will do the same thing. It has a little lean the other way, but it's very hard. Pines are very difficult to analyze without being up there in a bucket truck, looking at each old cut. When they're out in the open like that, as opposed to being in the forest, they tend to get more wind out, and they tend to flex and do more. Myself, were I there, and it were my home, on the other issue, I can, I have empathy for the homeowner in that I would be a little nervous about having a tree that size that close that had previous damage. And I certainly, where it's not a shade tree, such a deciduous shade tree, a pine out in the open like that is much more likely to create an issue or a safety issue than a hardwood tree.
Thank you, that certainly answers my questions. Becky?
And I believe that the homeowners said that they would plant another tree, is that correct?
Yeah, Jeannie Stanton, One Highwood Road.
Hi.
Be very happy to plant another tree, just not a pine.
Okay. Do I have any questions from the board? Is there a motion to remove the tree at One Highwood?
So moved. Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Chuck. We now move to a joint planning board interview and vote with the planning board for candidate Gordon Root. Jody, could you tell Sarah that we've finally finished?
Have we finished?
And she pointed her ass in your chair.
Sarah?
I know.
She just took the new chair smell by accident.
So do we?
Do we have planning board forum?
That's the question.
Can you talk to Mary, if anybody's online?
Uh, not, not planning board numbers.
Okay.
There is one person who is an iPhone, but it doesn't say who they are.
Yeah, so Laura is available since I text her. She's at the Monster Ecological Summit, or whatever that is. And I haven't heard from Mary, and Sue's unavailable. So I think, I would suggest that we don't have a forum, and that we can repeat this and take our vote on our Thursday evening, which is okay.
I think, my understanding is that a joint meeting is a forum of each committee, rather than a sequential vote.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yes.
Simultaneous.
So you're saying that as long as there's a.
No, no, what I'm saying is, I would like to defer the whole thing, including the discussion from the flat board.
If you're not going to, yes, I would agree with that, that you should defer everything if you're.
Defer everything, that our questions might enlighten the planning board and vice versa, and having serial meetings to confer. I'm sorry, Gordon.
It's okay. He's real short.
We will have a forum on Thursday, and we're hoping that all of you will be willing to come to the task force public forum. Well.
At least three of us.
Um.
Four.
Well, yeah, I don't remember what Jeff said about his availability.
Okay, anyway. On the right and hour before. Okay, so that we could take this as a, I guess, 6:15. 6:15 start to do this, yeah, so. I'm sorry about that, I did let everybody know a number of times.
Yeah.
Yeah, doing the best we can.
Okay, well, we'll let you, we'll see you all on Thursday night, on the 6:15.
You're out of here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
No, sorry, I did.
Well, we anticipated that this might happen.
Okay, great, thanks so much.
Yep.
Okay, now we're suddenly ahead of time.
You could jump to the liaison updates or consent.
Let's see.
Brian's ready.
Are there, are there any questions on the consent agenda? Anything that we need to pull out?
No, but I did want to make one modification on F, which is redlich nation of Breton Wood as action INCREP and ADA.
And ADA.
Other than that, do you want a motion to accept the consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John, yes.
Okay, well, that was easy.
That was pretty dumb.
And?
Chair?
Yes.
I don't think we have a closed evidentiary.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
That's true.
I was just going to say you did close the hearing.
Oh.
I have one drop to do on this.
Yes, do it again.
Would you do it now?
I'm going to select what closed evidentiary portion of the hearing other tree.
Second.
Brian?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Anne says yes?
John, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
No close to hearing.
Thank you very much.
I move that the board close the public tree hearing.
Second.
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Liaison updates. John?
The only thing I have is Historic District Commission has the final report of the town survey that was performed by John Clemson. That will be presented to us on Thursday at the same time of the MBTA forum, but this is life. So, and I'm looking at it, and he has catalogued virtually every town, every house in town. I thought he would pick only things that were, say, 50 years old or 75 years old. There are some houses in here from 2005. Not that they would be necessarily looked at, but he's got a full list there. So anyway, that report will be available Thursday. And I think that's all I've got, just that.
Yeah, lots going on with the Downtown Improvement Committee. So they're working to kind of, and I'm trying to help them, break up their big Downtown Improvement 2.0 project into manageable chunks, and then work with Nate and Chuck to kind of really put together a prior, set of priorities. What should be first, second, third, and how should that funding fit into our current plan? So working on that. They also discussed the possibility of creating a downtown map. So a lot of the local businesses, when people come off the train, they ask the same businesses, where is this, where is that? So there's a sense of agreement that we should create some sort of a map, give it to the local businesses for easy distribution and helping tourists. Also, there was a discussion of possibly, I believe the historical museum, the Manchester Museum, has offered to be, or is considering offering to be the de facto information center for the town. So, you know, we could provide them with maps. They certainly have all of the information needed on the town, but there's, we don't really have a central information center right now, and if they don't have anything to do with it, that would be great. I know we're not going to talk about, that's a hot topic at Downtown Improvement Committee meeting always, what about public bathrooms? So I just want to keep that on the radar. We really, you know, they came up with a possible consideration. Would we consider kind of subcontracting to a local business to provide public bathrooms? Perhaps giving them a small stipend. So some of the local businesses, one in particular, does let people, you know, they do let people use the bathrooms. Their bathroom, and their water bill goes crazy during the summer. So short-term solution might be, could we subcontract to a business to allow them to use the public?
So we talked about that a few years ago, and we didn't get any takers.
We have one, I think, possibly.
That was changed, and we should reopen that conversation.
Okay, all right, so I'll get with you on that, because that might be a nice short-term solution. And then Bike and Pet is also looking at documenting walking paths and biking paths, very much inspired by the Legacy Bench Project team. You know, they had that nice walking map, and so a lot of things happening there, I think that's it.
The planning board did not meet on Monday, so last Monday, so I've got no update there. I won't be here for the Thursday, because I have a task, the wayfinding meeting that night. And as far as the maps go, that was also part of what might be incorporated into all of wayfinding. And we have a member from the museum in attendance on those, who was giving us, saying the same thing, about possibly being an info center. Anyway.
That's it.
So we're meeting Thursday evening, and then we have the rest of the meeting set up to bring, we'll have the task force meet one more time before we come before the select board. With a couple of options.
Doesn't matter, sorry.
No, I won't be in attendance at the other meeting, because I'll be at the other meeting. Thank you.
Brian?
Pox and Rec getting ready for the busy time of year. The parade is pretty much running itself at this point, you know, they're, we are looking for a, kind of, from last time, to be a community star. You and I would refer to that as a grandma star. And I think that they'll, they, they, they will vote on it. For the select me votes on it next week. The scene beach is fully staffed, and they get ready, not ready, but I mean, as ready as they're gonna be. Tux, again, is ready as they're gonna be at this point. So Pox and Rec is busy, this is, they're a busy company.
And they have, they were able to hire all the staff they needed?
Yeah, they're fully staffed.
Great.
That was pickleball soundproof.
I don't, the, still end of May.
It's not the end of May.
There's no date. There's, they still, again, working with a vendor.
Well, it's part of status, status.
I was hoping it was gonna be, that's why I read past that.
Moving right along.
But, no, they, I checked a couple hours ago.
Okay.
And they don't have a date yet, date's certainly, yeah. I like the schedule for the end of May.
The school committee hasn't met, and there will be a summer forum for the MBTA zoning Thursday at 6:00. They can explain it even better than I can.
At 6:00 PM, the MBTA zoning forum?
Yes.
Okay.
So we...
6:30?
Six, that's 6:30, we need it 6:15, sorry.
I can make some of that.
And that's, the 6:15 part is important, because we need to have a forum.
Oh, yes, I'm aware of that.
Yeah. So we will regretfully say goodbye to you when you need to go to your next meeting.
That's, I think it's, that meeting is where I'll sit, right? Down the hall.
Yep.
And that meeting is where, just if anybody's listening?
The forum is here, and on Zoom.
This room?
This room, room five. It's close enough to 7:30, and the chief is here.
Yeah, there's Chief, huh, you weren't, you didn't think this was gonna happen, did you?
No, I didn't.
So we also, we have Allison Dell Azola from Regional Dispatch, as well as Christopher Ryan, who have both been extremely instrumental in all of this transition. Chief, want to start us off, and then we can, Allison.
Just over a year into our transition into Regional Dispatch, things have gone smoother than I first expected. Thanks to Chris and Allison and her team, or their team. We're still waiting on some stuff. Our laptops are in process for all the cruises and the boat. Our data conversion is still in process, and I think Chris can probably speak to that more. I can turn it over to them if they're on.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you for having us tonight. So yes, as Chief indicated, I'll let Chris speak to some of the technological aspects of where we stand in some of the post-go live items. But we are also happy to report that it has been a very successful onboarding and a very good partnership thus far. All parties in Manchester, from the administration to the chief levels, all the way down through all the ranks, have been very supportive and helpful, and I think we've really established a good working relationship amongst our staff, our respective staffs. So I think we are a year and two months past our expedited go-live, I think, and Chris can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we went live in March of last year. Can you believe it? I can't believe how quickly it's gone already. And we are poised to obviously continue doing some onboarding with potential other communities. We did sign another IMA, because I believe, you know, you'd want updates just about our staffing and stuff like that, and what it looks like for our services for your town. And so we did sign an IMA with the town of North Reading. Their feasibility study and information we did for them anticipates their onboarding to go into effect sometime in the fall of 2025. So they're a larger town, there's a lot more to be done there, so that will take a little bit longer. We are in good position with our current staffing with Manchester in. We will be doing continual additional hiring for when we bring in additional communities. And we are looking at upstaffing in terms of peak volume times during the summer, because Manchester brings a lot of additional call volume in the summertime to our existing call volume levels. And so we've just had an operations meeting today, in fact, to discuss that, to make sure that we are setting ourselves up for success in all of our communities up for success during the summer. We did just have a great hiring round. We have three new hires that we welcomed aboard that are in the final stages of their training, and they will be completely signed off and complete their training prior to the summer, which is excellent news, because that helps us have a fully robust body of personnel to draw around during those summer months. If you have specific questions, I'm happy to address them. Otherwise, I can hand it off to Chris to kind of talk about those details the chief referred to in terms of some of the post-go live technical items.
Everybody's looking at me, yes, I do have questions, of course. Thank you, Allison, Kathy Balata. Again, thank you for your early transition of our town, because we did have some staffing issues, and you pulled us in early, and we greatly appreciate that. In terms of, could you speak a little bit as to how you determine whether or not you can handle additional towns? So it sounds like North Reading isn't going live for another year and a half or so. What is your process for evaluating your team's readiness to handle another town? That's question one. And question two is, who else is on the horizon, if anyone?
Sure. So the process for evaluation is similar to what we did with your town when you submitted your letter of interest. So anytime we have any towns that have any sort of, you know, interest, a lot of times it'll start with peripheral meetings, in fact, finding on the town's, you know, behalf. But when they're serious about looking at the option, they do the same thing. They submit a letter of intent, and our feasibility study process is really how Chris, myself, my team address. Sorry, it's really weird when you have two earplugs in, it's like, I don't know how singers do it, I can't like hear myself. Sorry, so if I keep fiddling. So the process would be, the feasibility study is really for Chris and my team and myself to determine what that would look like, what those needs would be, if we are even able to bring on another community. Right, so like those factors of, all those things that the chiefs in Manchester did in terms of the workbook, that data gives us the information we need about whether or not we are at a point where we can take them. Do we have enough infrastructure? Do we have enough staff? Is it within the fiscal budget of State 901 to accommodate, you know, the costs associated with bringing in these towns? So that's why the, that process is such an important part. So when we got a letter of intent from North Reading, we contacted a feasibility study with them, and we said, this is what we're going to need. It's going to cost X, you know, X amount of dollars for the state to take them on. Do we have space physically in our center? What does it look like for staffing? And one of the major things for a town of a greater size is usually the amount of bodies that we need in order to provide the service. And so that's what would determine whether or not, A, they can come in at all, and B, how long that onboarding process would take. So I hope that answered the question. The feasibility study is really the process where we dig deep and we find out whether or not we can fit them into the capacity of our existing operation. Then, once we make that determination, you know, we go about the planning and enact the onboarding process with the timeline. In terms of on the horizon, we do have a letter of intent, and we're conducting a feasibility study from the town of Rowley currently. And I think a long time ago, we had done a feasibility study for Lynn Fields. I think that's still on the street, Chris, but that was well over two years ago, I would say, and we haven't heard from them. So that feasibility study, I dare say, isn't really even applicable anymore, because so much has changed since we first conducted it. Other than that, we don't have any other official letters of intent. We have a lot of, as we always do, you know, chiefs or different members of towns and departments coming to talk to us very high level, just to ask what it would look like, what are the steps? But none of that have, you know, gotten together and organized within their respective towns to come to us with a formal letter of intent.
Sorry, one last question regarding, I was looking at the information published on your website, your metrics. Do you need any help from us specifically with, to reduce the number of business calls? I noticed we have a lot of business calls going to your, it seemed like a lot of business calls going to your lines for such a small town. The non-emergency calls, so...
Sure.
Do you need our help with that, or are we similar to other towns?
I'll let Chris jump in in a minute, but I will say that it is not atypical for smaller towns to have more business calls. We are, that is something that is kind of the norm, because usually with a smaller town, your population is used to that direct level of service, where they are more familiar with calling, like, you know, the 1-2-1-2 number, and it's a public education, it's a culture shift for them to understand how to properly, or where to properly address their calls. Chris, do you have concern with the number of business calls, or how we can sort of mitigate that? I mean, we have the auto attendant system in place, and we have the protocols in place to handle them.
Yeah, so good evening, everyone. I don't, right now, I don't have too many concerns with the business calls. The one thing, Chief McNeil and I were working on, kind of re-scripting the fire department auto attend, and that was actually a case of the opposite, where I think they were getting, you know, real calls were getting directed to the fire station, when we wanted them to be directed to our staff at the regional center. So kind of the opposite of what the question was, but I think overall it is being handled pretty well.
So just to expand upon my question then, is there anything you need from us?
I would say just probably continued education about like down 901 for emergencies, you know, and call, you know, the local numbers for business calls. Otherwise, I mean, the amount of business calls you have are gonna be the amount of business calls you have if they are truly trying to reach the police or the fire department for, you know, business-related, non-emergency questions.
Thank you. Becky? Hi, Allison. I wanted to ask, I know that there's been some fluctuating in terms of the ability to hire. Have you seen, are there more people interested in working for the regional center?
Yeah, so, I mean, I was just talking to other people in our industry in general. So it comes in waves, right? And it's not just our center, it's definitely centers across the state, across the country. It's police departments, it's fire departments, it's public safety in general. What I can say is that while the appetite, I might, you know, of applicants, we may not have control over, like, we've talked about this before, a lot of people nowadays, they're looking for remote work. They're looking for things that don't have the heavy requirements of a public safety kind of industry job. But what we can do is we can increase the outreach efforts and our strategic sort of planning of how we're recruiting, how we're retaining, how we're attracting candidates. So that's something we're constantly working on in our agency. You know, we've been to at least three job fairs in the last two months. We have two more scheduled. I'm working with the Commonwealth for Resources, they have through things like LinkedIn and Handshake and these different platforms, where we can sort of get our, you know, job postings out beyond the normal, perhaps, scope of an audience that we usually reach. And I will say that, like I just said, that we just have our past class, and we have, out of four, we've retained three. So that's huge, right? And then what happens, the next batch? And then what happens, the next batch of applicants, we ended up getting, you know, one out of that batch. So it tends to go in waves. The thing is, we never stop. We have constant rolling recruitment, so we don't ever stop, you know, trying to get more talent. Because we know that even if we have it up for right now, we're going to want to grow in the future and we're going to need to add additional personnel. The other thing I've been proactively doing is working with the Commonwealth HR and with our unions to try to reclassify or level out, however you want to term it, the pay scale for our employees. Trying to make our jobs more attractive and keep us competitive with all the other P S apps and regionals that are trying to also hire dispatchers of the same kind that we are. And we're, while I can't speak exactly to it because HR is working to draw up some proposals to work with the union and they're still in kind of negotiations. I will say that I have made strides and been successful in getting that to the table and moving ahead. So I'm hoping, you know, within the next fiscal year, we're going to see a more attractive offer, sort of, or scale, if you will, in terms of salary to be able to attract talent.
And just to that, you've got several in the pipeline. Have you recently lost anybody?
We have, we have lost people that did not pass the training program. Like I said, out of, we had hired four, we lost one, you know, by attrition because we were not able to pass that person through the training program. And we had one person decide that the regional model wasn't good for them and resigned and went to a local P S app. And that was, Chris, when was that, two months ago?
Yeah, about two months.
About two months ago.
So you don't feel there's, that's concern going forward with other communities?
I don't because that is the standard in our industry. If you look at our annual reports, and Chris can back this up with some of his findings, you'll see that our retention rate is below the average from what had been in the past when our center went through some reworking. And it's below what national averages in general, so. It's part of the course. We're used to.
Do you mean the opposite, your retention is below or you're lost?
Yeah.
Attrition or?
Yeah, our attrition rate is below with the average. Yeah, sorry.
That's better.
Our retention rate is better. Yeah, the opposite. So what I'm saying is like, we tend to see a very steady pattern of, you know, attrition because it's just the way this industry is. We're either losing them because they can't pass training and so our numbers go up and down or, you know, in the past, we've lost people because they've moved on to other public safety jobs. They became police officers, they became firefighters. Or frankly, because regional dispatch is difficult, we've had people that have left for single P S apps. Ironically, perhaps, single P S apps that maybe deciding to look at the regional later on. So it's kind of, it's kind of an interesting cycle.
Thank you, Allison and Chris.
Yeah.
Chris, do you want to just talk to the tech, do you just, can he just give a brief update on the technical parts?
Allison, I just have a couple of questions. Maybe Chris is the guy, I'm not sure, but. All of this information is very encouraging. This is a good phone call, a very good phone call, I would say in general. Couple of questions with regard to the call volume. How was our call volume gone in the past year compared with previous years and or what your expectation is or was? And secondly, is there anything that was kind of unexpected in this last year of, I won't call it onboarding because we were on board, but in your first year of experience with us, is there anything that happened that was not expected?
Sure. So I think we, we had originally made a plan that we were going to kind of like isolate a dispatcher for just Manchester needs when we brought them on to make sure it was successful because we weren't sure what the call volume would look like because we were, you know, we weren't sure what it would look like even in the summer. And I will say that we were over-prepared. Chris might want to speak to this as well, but the call volume has not been overly taxing at all with our, even with our, where our current staffing level is now. So that's without adding any new people in with our new three sign-offs. And I would hope that the police and fire would agree that we have been able to handle their calls and it's been pretty seamless in terms of fitting into our current operation. So I think the surprising thing is that it didn't, we expected maybe or we were being prepared and overly cautiously prepared for more call volume than we actually got. Now, that just might have been last year, though. So we're not, we're in the business of, we know that there's no predictability in call volume ever, right? So that's why every year we look at and every month and every peak season, we look at the possibility of increasing staffing is needed, right? So last summer may not have been, but it also rained a lot last summer. Like maybe we get a lot of hot weather this summer and our call volume is going to be higher, especially in your town with the beaches and stuff like that. So we are always, we don't like get in a comfortable zone, so to speak, of like, oh, their call volume is not high. But I think it's been very manageable over the last year. And we're, like I said, we're poised for the summer to, in case it does, in case we do see more of a peak. Chris, do you want to speak to that more and then if there's anything that was surprising? I can't really off the top of my head think of anything that was wildly surprising. I mean, we've worked out some kinks here and there and, you know, did a lot of back and forth with the police and fire to make sure that we were providing the service they needed.
Yeah, so I'd say, I mean, as far as call line goes, I'd say it was probably kind of in line with what I was kind of estimating in my mind. You know, the staff's been able to handle that. As far as anything unexpected, I'll take this on a good note. We've actually got some amazing involvement between the police and fire departments and actually they helped to get us in with the school department to be able to do meet and greets with them, to start doing some testing, working on some active assailant plans that we've been working on between Manchester and Essex. So I mean, that's a huge positive, you know, that I've seen, that they've been excellent partners. You know, the same thing goes for the Harvard Master and other agencies we've had to work with. It's really been a pleasure. It's been no issues. It's, you know, it's been, everything's going really well.
Good to be over-prepared and over-deliver.
It's a good position to be in, for sure.
And I do have some, if you'd like me to speak on some of the technological updates, I'm happy to give you a quick update on those pieces there. Okay, sorry. So the updates, so I mean, I did, your chief Fitzgerald kind of gave a few of the updates for me. So the MDTs, I've got mobile data terminals for. I've got one of the larger size and one of the smaller size. And basically, we're finalizing doing what's called an image. We're just about at the finish line on that one right now. Once that's completed, that'll be sent out to the factory out in Kansas where they load that onto all of the computers. And the company transfer of Georgetown is going to be doing the work. And assuming we can get these images sent out like this week or next week, at the latest data survey, they should be able to get it all done by the end of the fiscal year, which would be awesome, you know, if we can get that done before the full of July. The fire station alerting project is on hold, kind of pending some of the other procurements that we have going on. So we haven't been able to move on that one, but we have been moving pretty steadily on the other projects. And I have actually worked with Chief McNeil on specifications for fire station alerting. So, you know, I think we're in a good position with that one to move when we're ready to do that one. Couple of the other ones we've been working on, let's see. As far as radio, radio work, it's been kind of a, we've had a lot involved with getting the radio stuff to come to fruition. We actually had to work out a memorandum of agreement with the Gloucester Fire Department to put up a receiver site over in Gloucester. And we also had to work with DCR to get permission to put something on the fire tower in Essex. So those two things actually took several months of going back and forth. But we did get the green light from both of those agencies. We did go out and procure Comcast for fiber connectivity. And I'm happy to report just the other day, I was able to do walkthroughs at all of the sites that we wanted to add fiber to. And actually, just this morning, I got notification that it looks like they're going to be doing the fiber work in, I think it's the week of June 7th, and they're hoping to actually turn it on the week of June 14th, which would be excellent. Because we've also done procurements for all of the actual radio equipment. And the vendor, I've been working with him and he's actually looking to get all of that installed by the end of June as well. So that, I think we're in good shape to get the radio projects completed by the end of June. And then a couple of, let's see, a couple of other things is just real quick. Because we did end up adding Manchester's I responded account into ours. So I mean, we've been able to integrate that successfully. And I know originally Manchester didn't want to join the emergency notification system that we had. And then shortly after going live, there was an indication that the town did want to actually pursue joining our system. So we are slated to be able to cut that over, I think, for a July 1 cut over. I know, I know the town actually switched vendors to the same vendor we're using now. So I anticipate when we actually assume ownership, if you will, of the building, that should be a very smooth transition since you already built it on the side. The one hiccup, if you will, and I kind of saved this one for the last, is the one that kind of, you know, is data conversion. You know, as far as being able to do the Manchester fire data conversion, you know, I think that will be able to get accomplished. We've been trying to use one, we were hoping to use one particular vendor. And this particular vendor, we've had a lot of trouble with as far as doing the microsystems, the Pro 4 data conversion from your legacy police record system. Apparently, the guy that was the only person we know that does it is retired and living on a boat down in a nicer area. So we're trying to find another vendor that we might be able to engage with to do the police data conversion. You know, that's kind of, we need to figure that piece out right now. That's the last obstacle we need to overcome, I'd say.
So the radio upgrades have been just a wonderful addition, I'd say, for both fire and police.
Once we get the Magnolia site up and running, I think that's going to be a huge impact for us.
Yep, exactly. So it's been a great effort on their part. That's a plus, I think. I know Chief McNeil, you're online. Did you have any other comments you want to add to this discussion?
No, I think working with Allison and Chris since I've joined back to Manchester has been delightful. They're very easy to work with and the issues that we have are quickly resolved. And it's been a seamless transition on the fire side. And with some of the radio upgrades coming, it's only going to get any better. So I thank them for their cooperation and hard work.
No, again, they've been, it's a lot smoother than I thought. We had, obviously had to go two months early and it worked all pretty much worked out better than I expected.
Allison, Chris, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you all. Nice to see you.
Thank you very much.
That is a classic example. If you don't notice it, then they're doing a good job.
Not hearing anything.
That was a good reason to ask and get some good news once in a while.
Is this going to be an annual action item, like once a year they'll?
So it would be my recommendation that yes, they are a strategic supplier to this town and I think we have a responsibility to do a check-in and.
No, I think they'd be happy to.
Once a year. That's fine.
That goes on the actions for?
Long range.
Next year?
Add it now so we don't forget, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on our agenda is the petty cab service discussion. Greg, do you want to just lead off with?
So we have two gentlemen here with us tonight who would like to present to you a proposal for a new shuttle service for beachgoers. This is utilizing electric bikes. They can better describe the bikes once they get underway. So that, they would like to present to you this proposal. If they are to go forward, you need to issue a license, a delivery license. A little different as electric bikes rather than a vehicle, but nonetheless, this still requires you to grant a license.
Do we need to get insurance?
Yes. Yes. So I think turn over to our two gentlemen here and they can introduce themselves and take it from there.
Thank you. Mind if we come behind the podium?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, awesome. So thank you guys so much for giving us some time today. Would you like just to start with our name and address? Yes, man. I'm Matthew Lappin. I live at One Windermere Park.
I'm Alman Patel. I'm studying at Babson College. I'm currently majoring in real estate entrepreneurship and I also live in Rockport, Massachusetts.
So growing up in Manchester, Singing Beach has been an absolute critical point to the success of the summers. And spending so much time here, I've witnessed the barrage of people walking up and down the street in between downtown and Singing Beach. So what we're here today to do is propose a new efficient transportation service using petty cabs to shuttle people to and from Singing Beach. Today, my partner, Alman, is going to be talking about why our custom-built petty cabs will provide the most benefit to Manchester as well as what qualifies us to run such a business. Please hold all your questions until yet.
Yeah, so we believe a petty cab offer from Manchester would purchase essentially a standard frame. So we would not be building the frame, so no safety issues there. We would purchase a standard frame and then we would essentially customize it to our needs. So essentially, that would consist of storage underneath the seat just for smaller belongings that beachgoers would have, towels, small bags, as well as external hooks for larger items like umbrellas or larger beach chairs. We would also make sure to have seat belts across this two-to-three-person seater. We're still working on the dimensions a little bit on that side, depending on the frame and making it a custom-built model. But seat belts just to ensure our passenger's safety. We're also going to have custom painting. We're thinking more along the lines of blue and white. We can talk to the town depending on what aesthetic you would like for encompassing Manchester and the beach field that comes along with the summer. And then we would also just charge on a per ride basis and accepting cash or Venmo's, whatever it is this year. So we believe that this, not only does it increase, you know, convenience for locals, but it would also attract beachgoers from other areas who, you know, encounter this clear transportation issue. At least when Matt and I were younger, we didn't have cars, obviously. So we would encounter this issue many, many times, lugging beach gear up that steep hill. But tourists could essentially just enjoy the singing sand and all the amazing amenities that come along with the singing beach experience without the hassle of having to find parking near the beach. And I know Manchester, you need specific parking passes, so that can also be an issue for outsiders or non-locals. And then also, you know, lugging the gear, beach street, as I said. So aside from just having local entrepreneurs to fill this gap in the community, our service will also just focus on providing quality care. As Matt and I said, we spent all of our summers in Manchester. And, you know, due to our local passion, we really think that we could guarantee customer satisfaction by representing Manchester in a good light and showing, you know, whether it's tourists or locals, the good side of Manchester.
Yeah, so we know that these are very lofty goals and I want to ensure you that we're both very qualified to meet said goals. I'm just going to give you a couple of examples of what we've done in the past. I know personally, when I was very young, I ran a successful lemonade business right out of Massana. And expanding on that, I started a thriving dog walking company right in town last, a couple of summers ago that proved to me very beneficial. As well as this fall, I was able to partner with my local business school to help small businesses, help consult for small businesses across Dallas, mostly focusing on the scalability of those businesses.
Yeah, and then for me, so being at Babson, I just finished a year-long course called F and B where essentially you get the firsthand experience of funding, scaling, and closing down a business, start to finish. So we believe our joint entrepreneurial mindset will allow us to be extremely well-versed in not only just the business operations, but also being receptive to feedback, whether that be from local government or potential customers. And I believe that would really, really help us, especially this feedback loop in the developmental stages because we know we're kind of going to have to base certain actions on demand and how it goes in the first couple of weeks. But we believe this mindset will allow us to overcome any challenges. But we believe this, this will, this mindset will allow us to overcome any challenges that we see in the near future.
So Beach Street Shuttles provides a perfectly curated service designed for Singing Beach. And this addition to Manchester would not only allow for stress-free commutes to and from the beach, but it would also enhance the quality of life for locals and people coming to visit for the beach. So we'd now like to open the floor to any questions you guys.
Becky? Thank you both. I think this is a great idea. And we do have another shuttle service in town, but a little competition can be a, a good thing. And yours is a different model. Who would actually be the owner? Whose name would be on the petty cab?
I think my name would be on the petty cab.
Okay, and have you looked into insurance at this?
Yes, we look, we have looked in insurance. I don't have specific companies or plans for you, but we would look to ensure passenger, driver, and vehicle.
Does that would be essential, essential, essential?
Yes, ma'am, of course.
I have a question. Yeah, it's a great idea. Definitely need it in town. So you haven't finalized the, the petty cab version or customization, but do you have a general sense as to how big it is, the dimensions? Can you give us some sense?
So the electric bike is just standard?
Right.
Standard bike length, and then you have a bike attachment which attaches to the petty cab, which is probably like 10 inches, and then it's an 80-inch in length.
80-inch, okay.
Attachment.
Got it, okay. And so on slower days?
Yeah.
Where would you put the petty cab in between rides?
So in between rides?
Because as, as Becky mentioned, there's another service in town too, and would you see yourself competing for that parking space?
Yeah, that's definitely a valid question. I think that we'll honestly be busy most of the day when we're just shuttling up and down Beach Street. But more or not, we've been offered space to park at 40 Beach Street Harbor Light Point as well. But I think it would honestly be more beneficial to just run it out of Maskinello Park or, I'm not exactly sure the name of the park, the one across from. Yeah, exactly. I think it would honestly be more beneficial to run out of there versus a private. Yeah, that's definitely a valid question. I think that we'll honestly be busy most of the day when we're just shuttling up and down Beach Street. But more or not, we've been offered space to park at 40 Beach Street Harbor Light Point as well. But I think it would honestly be more beneficial to just run it out of Maskinello Park or, I'm not exactly sure the name of the park, the one across from. Yeah, exactly. I think it would honestly be more beneficial to run out of there versus a private.
Okay, you have just touched on one of the hot buttons, which is parking. Are you going to be taking a, a regular parking, parking space or you're going to park on the grass at Maskinello?
Yeah, right on the sidewalk, something like that. I mean, during night, I, I would plan on storing it, of course, at my house. So that's not, not an overnight storage issue. We're more focusing on just like during the day commuting. Which, as of course, it's demand-dependent, but we're planning on just running and switching batteries and just keeping it running until no more demand.
I, I'm not sure that I'm thinking that it's a great idea to be running back and forth empty.
That's not, that's.
That's not our call.
Not our.
Sorry, you mean like back and forth without passengers, you're saying? Oh, I would plan on picking up passengers on each, from each.
I understand, but on the, on the day when it's marginal?
Yes, ma'am.
I just, we have spent so much time trying to free up every parking space in town. And I would like it if you found a place, preferably perhaps in the MBTA parking behind 40 Beach or in 40 Beach.
Yeah.
The MBTA is the unpaid place.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But please don't take up either a regular parking space or park on the sidewalk.
Don't park on the sidewalk.
Not allowed to park on the sidewalk.
Perfect. Understood. And if we're running into a slow day or if we don't think we're going to have much traction, I'll just take the thing up.
Yeah, he lives on School Street, so it's not like.
That's, that's, that's fine. I just, as a warning.
Definitely understood.
Understood.
Is there a, do you have a fee structure yet? I mean, does this, unlike the petty cab, unlike the beach shuttle, which was just tips only, right?
Yes.
There was no real fee. All right, you, you mentioned you're going to have a fee.
Yeah, I think it would be. Sorry?
What's the structure on that?
I think it would be a per-ride, per-ride system.
Per person or?
Per-ride.
Per-ride.
Regardless of whether.
Regardless, you have two or three people, as much stuff as you want. Costs maybe 10 to start, maybe 15 if the demand's high each way.
Or lower.
It's kind of Uber surge. No, I'm just, I mean, are we going to get complaints?
Yes.
Is the town going to receive? Pardon?
I'm sorry, we're going to get what?
Is the town going to receive complaints about what they perceive to be overcharged?
Well, that's a private.
That's a private business. It's none of our business how much they charge.
And we just say, no, we're not interested in hearing about it.
That's none of our business.
We'll take all the complaints.
Yeah, I'm more happy to talk to customers.
Hey, I've got a question regulatory-wise, and because we went through this last year with the, with the golf cart.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Charging was a very big factor in terms of the category that you were in. Now, I understand this is a bicycle. It's a different situation. Are we dealing with the same kind of registration? And I don't know that you guys necessarily know.
As I recall, the issue with last year was the gentlemen were not adults. They were under, they were under 18.
Okay.
And so they were not allowed to charge a fee. These gentlemen are over 18.
All right, so that's not, that's not a problem. So this is a rickshaw?
Yes, I see.
Now, are you, are, are you buying off the shelf the, the trailer that's going to be hooked onto the bike or are you making this?
So we're buying like the frame of the trailer and then we're going to renovate it for our own custom needs.
Okay, all right.
And the attachment is included in the frame of the trailer.
You going to give us a picture of that at some point?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to see that.
Well, and then is this?
Like the Seinfeld episode.
It's going to need a lot of remodeling, right?
Yes, definitely.
In the spirit of full disclosure, I've known, I'm on.
This is what they currently.
Most honest.
All right, on and off.
His line, but it doesn't impact my decision.
I'll show, I'll come around to the video. That's fine. I'll come around to the video of it driving in one second.
How about?
Sorry, ma'am.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And if you'd like to see a video of it actually, this is what it looks like when it's huddled up to.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fun. That's good.
That's what it looks like when it's huddled up.
I have a question, may I?
Yes.
Maybe it's a question for Greg, but would it be appropriate or advisable if we give these gentlemen our approval to take the next step and continue on their path? And they eventually get a license, as part of getting that license, could we do some sort of safety inspection just to make sure everything is hunky-dory? Is that something the town would do or who would be?
That was, that was one of my next questions. Who inspects the renovation of this? And I don't think me or anyone specifically qualified to do that.
Okay.
Well, is the, does the insurance company? If an insurance company is going to insure them, that would be?
So that's their responsibility to make sure it's?
If they want, if they're insuring, that would.
I mean, the risk, the risk is the carrier.
Risk is the carrier.
So I would, I would think they would, they would take the time to make sure that it's a safe operation.
Okay, makes sense.
You're not, or charge a very high premium. I'm not sure.
Do you have a start date in mind? I assume you want to move things along as fast as you can.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, June 1st would be ideal, but it would definitely take, definitely take a lot of moving to get there. So we, we were just looking to see, we're very eager to get, to get going on this project. And we're looking to see what you think would be the most advisable next steps.
The next, the, the next step is to get insurance.
Okay.
And our next meeting is June 3rd.
That's going to be a chicken egg kind of thing too, because you got to get insurance, but you don't have anything to insure yet.
Yeah, so it's.
There's some that you haven't added inspected. So it's, I think June 1st is, is an admirable.
Well, it's not going to happen.
Well, I was just, yeah, because.
No meeting tomorrow.
So is June 4th a more reasonable start date? If we got everything complete, came back for the June 3rd meeting with the insurance, with the full petty cab, everything good to go? Do you think June 4th theoretically would be an appropriate start date?
Yeah, I think that.
So you have that or the 17th. Those, those are the two next meetings.
Okay, great.
The 3rd and the 17th.
Okay, great.
And just, we need to know if you're ready by?
The Thursday before.
The Thursday before.
Okay, I, not going to give you my 100% word, but we will be ready.
Is there a chance, once you have it, I'd like to see it.
Absolutely, I mean.
Of course. You must go for a ride.
I don't know.
Uh, it's going to take a couple days to get it here and get it set up.
But I guess, so then we can.
I mean, you might just use it around town. Feel free to wave us down. We'll, we're happy to give you a little test drive.
Any type of registration has to be done with it?
It's a bicycle.
So they have to get their delivery license, right?
But he can ride, he can drive around town without a delivery license, if it's his, right?
And then what would the process of getting the delivery license be?
Come here, talk to me.
Show us your insurance.
You already filled out the application, so.
Yeah, okay, great.
Paid to pay.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much. Thank you guys for your time. We're eager to get going on the next steps.
Thank you and good luck.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Before you, before you walk out, is there anybody online who has a question or here? Yes.
Mark, trust, David E. Metz. I just have a question regarding the width. For 3x3 wide, would that be about four feet wide?
Yeah, it's about like 50 inches.
And then what is the speed of the vehicle?
So the bike, without any extra weight, just beyond it, can go comfortably 20, but I don't think with that, if it gives itself 315 pounds, it'll probably go somewhere between 12 and 15 miles an hour.
And the reason I was asking is on Beach Street, the speed limit's probably 20.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't see people trying to pass you. You would not be old enough to drive.
Yep.
And it's going to be strong enough to pull three people up, uh, up the hills.
I ran some tests, I ran some tests already.
I'm just.
Once, and then you have to go back and reschedule.
Okay, Karen, um, you have, unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Hi, Karen Bennett, 28 Lincoln Street. So my question is, so that means they won't be using the bike lanes that we just kind of painted and sprayed and all that stuff?
The bike lanes on?
The bike lanes on?
On the route they're going, no.
No bike lanes at all? Okay, thank you.
There are no bike lanes on Beach Street.
Oh, interesting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much for your time. We appreciate it.
Go ahead, dude.
Good luck.
You won't see me next time. I'll be a new person. Oh, the next item up is non-registered, non-resident mooring, owner parking. And I think Greg, you have been talking with the school.
So the, the school is, is amenable to allowing parking in the upper parking lot for, for mooring holders who are not residents. And Betsy has volunteered to sort of be the liaison for that effort. I don't know, Betsy, if you had a chance to speak with folks today or not, but I know that we have the contact information to do so. So that's, that certainly is a viable option for folks. And I think that's a good, a good option certainly for the non-school time, for sort of the height of the season, July and August. I think that works well. It come, you know, prior to, prior to July, I would say the season is not as, as robust. But there are the additional options of the Lincoln Street spots crossing the tennis courts. So those are available. We don't regulate the amount of time people park there. So that can be sort of first come, first served, I think, for, is another option. Besides if the school is not available, they're still in session. And there's also the option of Sweeney Park, though again, through this, through now until early July, it's, it's, it's pretty heavily used. So it's not as.
And it's, it's not as lighted, it's not as.
Right.
Secure.
So again, that doesn't, I'm trying to think of places when the school is not available, what are the additional options? And so then there is the question ticked around the idea of maybe extending the ability at Tux. I know that some are in favor, some are against that, so I think that's just something for you to resolve. So right now, you said up to three nights at, at Tux. So right now would be daytime parking, no overnight parking here along the seawall. But we basically have said, you know, 6:00 AM to midnight as a, as a timeframe. And then there'd be the Tux Point for up to three nights unless you were to extend that. And then the third option would be at the high school or at Lincoln Street for options. So that's, that's where things sit.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, I, I'm in favor of making Tux a week. Now, I, I assume that one can also juggle cars, as long as two people are involved. One person can be here, some person can drop a car off at Tux Point and then get picked up at Tux Point as the boat's coming out. And do the reverse when you come back.
Or they can sign up for the launch service.
Yes, I mean, it depends what you got and what's going on. But I, I mean, I, I did that quite a bit when I, well, just had a lot of stuff. Give me somebody at Tux on the way out.
Yeah.
Just reverse it coming back. Just has to be two people or more, that's all.
No, my only thought is that the, by going a week at Tux, we're basically limiting other non-resident mooring holders from using those spots. So I, I'm, I'm more inclined to go with the three. At Tux, go with three days and then tucking the cars away.
So what do you mean eliminating non-resident?
Well, if, if some person is using it for a week, that means other people can't use it.
Other non-residents can't use it.
For a week, but I mean, non-residents come in for a day, they park anywhere.
The point is, we said we're going to limit it three, three days.
Right.
You want to extend it to a week. There's four days that that parking spot is taken away there, other than non-resident.
Who might be there for an extended time.
Right, so my point is, I mean, the, the convenience factor of being at Tux, okay? As opposed, if you're going to be gone longer than three days, then I think long-term parking should be either at the high school or at Sweeney or Lincoln or something like that. But again, I'm just thinking about how many non-resident placards do we have? Okay, and I think the, the number was like 60 or so.
Did we ever get the resolution whether any placards were issued to residents?
I thought you said yes.
I think we no longer will do that.
Right, we did it one time.
Oh, I, I'm very aware of that.
Again, my point is this, I would like to see Tux limited to three days. And then if, if you're going to be gone longer than three days, then I'm sorry, you're going to be inconvenienced, you're going to have to move over to the high school.
Similar the way Logan Airport handles, but if you want to park it, you know, at a terminal, it's short-term parking. If you want to park for a longer period of time, you've got to go in central parking or one of the satellites. Long-term parking is further away typically. So I think that's the model that, that Brian is.
Much more.
And, and I, I have an additional concern about this. I, I realize this is not up to the cap, the town is not responsible for this, but the, the school lot is lighted and there are cameras. The Tux Point, I walk my dog there and there's generations of broken glass in the grass. And I know the police do a very good job of patrolling that, but if there's one dark car there, a bunch of kids who, who have seen you coming and said, oh, let's kind of hide a little bit.
Doesn't happen as often as it used to, but.
I eat from. That's good, because, yeah, I, I, I. How to say something other than duck kids have really bad judgment.
Apology has some really bad judgment.
Yeah, so, and then you add under the influence. I would just, just think that for safety's sake, people would, would prefer to be in a, in a lot that's lighted and.
And that becomes their choice.
Yes.
But I'm saying is that.
At, at three days.
Three days, that's it.
The only thing I didn't mention is whether or not you want to consider post-Labor Day differently. During the height of the season, you're saying three days only in September when you really do see a significant
That's possible.
Reduction in use of tux.
That's, yeah, I mean, I'll make that compromise.
And, and, and the school needs their lot and so forth.
That's right.
That's what I'm saying.
We lose the school option in September.
When, so when you lose the school option, then the parking could be, length of parking could be increased at Tux Point?
The school usually starts.
It starts in August, right?
Very often, that's late in August.
So there's.
Last week.
And again, we still have the option of Sweeney Park.
Yep, right. I think after Labor Day.
Yeah, Sweeney probably is an option late, late summer. Early, early September, such as, it's been not as much.
Well, do we need to decide now what day we're switching over and how long we're going or?
Well, the more you can decide, I think, the better, but, but if you're wanting to hold off on that actual date, but have a general concept, that at least gives people a sense of.
Or, or can we perhaps just say that when, two days before school opens, people have to be out of the school? And that then we will allow a week of parking in the end times?
Yes.
We know that.
That'd be great.
But the issue with that then comes into Labor Day.
Do we allow extended parking before Labor Day when there are events going on down at the Chowder House? Or is that? I mean, it seems a fair compromise, I, I think, to, when the school lot's not available. I just wonder is how busy Tux?
The place, the times when the lot is really full, mostly it's the red, white and blue breakfast. Now, that's, that's something that we should probably exempt completely.
Yeah.
Yes, I would agree.
Um, so.
That's Saturday, the twenty ninth of June is. Saturday before four o'clock, it's always a Saturday before.
That's Saturday, January four. Yeah, because at that point, the whole lot is used. The place where one would put a car for long-term parking is where the ponies are.
So be careful with your stuff.
So we need to include that exempt date.
But the school's available then, so.
Right, oh, yeah, yeah.
So, so it looks, I'm just looking at the calendar, it looks like the last day of school is June thirteenth, if I'm reading this correctly.
It's the first day of school.
Well, I'm talking about the last day of school in June.
So when they can start parking there, right.
Do we still have to get a formal approval from the school committee?
Kids, we're not really, this is.
I mean, but I mean, if we're gonna put it on a website or if we're gonna post it.
I think it's administratively being handled.
And I think they should decide what day they can stop parking there.
Yeah, I think it's subject to confirmation with that.
But they're aware.
Yes.
And a minimal, obviously.
I'm not sure, there are so many details to this, I'm not sure I can formulate a motion convenient.
Or maybe a couple of motions.
Okay.
Durationally, not, park after the last day of school and no more parking two days before school begins.
Oh, yes, sir.
Oh, Betsy, enter in.
Betsy, I'm sorry.
Betsy Ware, South Berwick, Maine, representing non-resident mooring holders. And I'm a member of the Manchester Harbor Boat Club. I am not representing the Baker's Island community. I just need a little clarification here. So what you're saying is three days at Tux Point and specific non-overnight for eight spaces behind the police station. Then, so for longer-term parking, boaters would be able to use a stretch of Lincoln Street, starting relatively soon. And then the last day of school, which is June twenty-third, we'd be able to start using the lot at the high school, the upper lot for longer-term non-resident boater parking. Three days at Tux Point, three nights. Then after Labor Day, a week or more than a week at Tux.
Rather than Labor Day, it needs to be several days before school starts.
Okay.
Rather than specific.
Okay, okay. And do we know when school starts?
It starts the, the week before Labor Day.
Okay.
And it doesn't start on a Monday, it starts on a Monday.
It's the same Monday, it's Monday before Labor Day.
Wednesday before Labor Day.
Usually it's Friday before Labor Day.
So we wanna clear it out, so let's say Monday is two days to clear it out.
So then, as soon as we can't use the high school, then we're allowed to, non-resident boaters could be at Tux Point for a longer period than three days.
Mm-hmm.
Up to a week, right?
Okay, and then any longer-term parking after Labor Day would be at, on Lincoln Street?
Sweeney, Lincoln Street or Sweeney?
And, okay, but isn't Sweeney?
That's, don't they have soccer games and, I don't, we can't have Sweeney because after that it's.
It's softball.
Soccer, softball, whatever they do, the ball sport.
But they usually, yeah, that's, yeah, so maybe Sweeney doesn't work after, every day. Forget about the, the ball.
So I'm, I, my question is, are there more municipal streets that could be used? And why is that?
Chief says no.
Most of my res, posted resident parking lot.
Right.
Okay, but couldn't some of those streets be used for, particularly outside the center of town be used? For non-resident?
That would be up to the, to the board if I had to say.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of that.
No.
Okay.
There are quite a few slots on Lincoln Street across from Memorial School.
Right.
And that's.
Six rate, I think there's six rate spots there on that.
Uh, more than that, yeah.
Oh, there's more than that, yeah.
That's, I would say.
As long as there's not a food truck.
So tennis, tennis is a spring sport.
Yeah, that's spring.
So you're not competing there.
Yeah, there's something going on, I think, at, yeah.
Tennis is.
So I'm just thinking of, is there any other spot that could be used for non-resident boater after Labor Day?
I, I don't, again, I don't think that that is.
You mean more than a week, because Tux is available for a week, but more than a week.
Right, right.
I think we've exhausted it all.
Yeah.
That's the spot.
Why?
You need more than a dozen spaces.
I don't really know in a week.
I don't think that that's our, yeah.
Probably, probably not. I mean, in twenty twenty-two, when the upper lot was being used, except for, at the high school, except for big weekends like the Fourth of July, there was maybe ten. But that was, at that point, it was just for Baker's Islanders. It wasn't included, the Manchester Harbor Boat Club and other boat club, the yacht club wasn't included.
The yacht club has its own, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, that's ten spots that are going longer than a week. And I understand people are out for several days, but they can park at Tux.
Right, right, right.
But the number of people that are gonna be gone for a month in September, that's not my problem.
But that's, that's not our problem.
No, that's.
Someone's gonna be gone for a month, they, you know.
Usually get.
They need to figure.
People have been gone for a month, they usually get dropped off at the airport too.
Yeah.
I mean.
I'm, I'm liking this to the airport.
Yeah.
Okay, you got short-term parking, you got long-term parking, and you got people picking you up, Ubering, getting back and forth. People who've been commuting for a long time can do it. And we just, we're limited to the amount of parking we have in town.
I mean, there are Ubers, like, could you, I mean, come drop your things off and then Uber from.
Or taxi, or, I mean, your taxi's on K Man.
Taxi, they're not always here.
Yeah, I'm not Ubering from Maine.
No, no.
That's, no.
Yet it's not, you know, we're not, we are not responsible for providing parking for everybody. Now, why, not that this has anything to do with the decision, but why did, why does Salem not allow parking for Baker's Island?
Actually, well, I don't know about Baker's Island, but Salem actually offers seventy-two hour parking or more, depending on where you park.
Again, why, why are we, I mean, as, as Baker's Island is part of Salem, is it not?
That's true.
So if you're paying taxes to Salem, do they not provide parking for Baker's? And, and I'm not, I'm not, I just, I just am failing to understand why it's Manchester's responsibility to provide long-term parking for anybody. That's what I don't understand.
Okay, so.
And I'm not asking for long.
I've made it clear, I'm not representing Baker's Islanders, so that's a whole other issue. My understanding from talking with a number of people is that in the nineteen-sixties, the town of Manchester accepted federal funds for dredging. And at that time, they were, it was predominantly resident mooring holders. And the string that was attached to that dredging money was that
All right, well, that, I'm gonna interrupt.
It could not be kept as.
Let, let's do this through me.
And if I may, I think that, 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 you know, that was, we have dredged many times since then. My point is still standing that I don't think it's the responsibility of the select board.
I, I agree with you. Chapter ninety-one does not require that we provide long-term parking nine months a year.
Right, right. Right.
And, and I just. It requires that we not discriminate among mooring applicants and we not charge different fees for moorings. But in terms of, of getting to your boat, we currently allow non-residents to, when I was a kid, non-residents couldn't tie up to the dinghy dock. So you join the Harbor Boat Club. And I believe that we now allow non-residents to.
She was a campus norm.
Thank you. But the state does not go, the, the federal government does not go as far as it's required that we provide long-term parking.
I agree.
We're doing this because we think that the non-resident boaters contribute to the community in ways other than paying taxes. And, and we'd like to have you be happy, but we're getting to the very edges of, of, of where we can find space.
And just to be clear, I mean, even, you know, like I said, I have my boat somewhere else. The marina I belong to has a certain number of parking spaces. If I don't get there early on a sunny day, I have to find another way to get to my boat. You know, even a marina that you pay for only has a certain number of spaces to give. So I, I, I hope you feel that we are doing everything that we can. But as far as the long-term parking, I mean, I don't even get that where I am now.
But we do, there are a dozen spaces there on Lincoln Street.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, I mean, let's see what happens there. Might be difficult, but that's not enough at this point, but I don't know the population.
Well, I appreciate that. And I just don't quite understand, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Hello, Robert Levens, South Berwick, Maine. I'm speaking for myself as a mooring holder, out-of-town mooring holder. I just have a question, a theoretical question. I appreciate what you've just apparently decided tonight. I appreciate it, I think it'll work fine. I just, I'm a little, let's forget about boater parking altogether. Let's forget about that for a moment. Let's say someone who has a car, who registers a car and pays taxes, excise taxes on their car, lives out of town and wants to park overnight on the street in Manchester. Always that person, except he doesn't live in Manchester. Plenty different from the person who does the same thing, but lives in Manchester. What do the residents of Manchester think?
We just eliminate them.
That that person who might park overnight in Manchester is gonna do that they're afraid of.
Didn't we just eliminate long-term parking in Manchester?
We, we did, we did eliminate seven spaces that were available for multi-month parking for residents.
I'm, I'm just asking a question because I don't know the answer to.
I think I understand the question.
So, so I, I would, what I have heard as a request is for the non-residents to be allowed access to more of the core of downtown, okay? That, you asked if there are other streets where, where people can park on. And everything around the, the water is non-resident during the summer. So, I'm sorry, excuse me, resident during the summer. So, you know, if you're gonna park out in Essex and take a cab, I, I mean, I.
There's some bridges on Pine Street.
Yeah, way up. I, I don't, I.
I'm just, just asking a question, that's all.
If you wanna park way up on Pine Street by Black Earth or something, I, I don't know. Is that a problem or are there trails there? Is that one of the reasons? I, I don't know.
Nothing posted up there, yeah.
I mean, it's way far away from downtown. I, I don't think we've discussed it at all or prohibited it, but.
But school street doesn't.
School street has the trails, so people use those trails.
I'm, I'm certainly asking to open a can of worms, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand, that's all. I thank you for your, your time.
Yeah, Mark Trust, PBD, long-term resident, non-resident mooring since nineteen eighty-nine. Just regarding the spaces out here last year, I don't believe there were any problems. It was limited to twelve spots. Brian's comment regarding, you know, limiting, limiting it to three days at Tux Point would open up more spaces for other non-resident mooring holders to park. Like I said, I don't think there was a problem last year. We had space, using just the twelve spots, so that doesn't seem to be a problem. The signage down at Lincoln Street, I believe there is signage there that talks about two-hour parking.
No signage on Lincoln Street.
Good, okay, great. And then as far as Parks and Recreation and Tux Point, is Tux under the jurisdiction of the Parks and Recreation Department?
Yes, the short answer is yes.
Okay. What do they have to say in where we should be parking down there?
No.
Well, they, we will designate an area of looking through Parks and Rec.
Okay, great, all right. That's, that was my question. I know that, I know there's grass areas and there's gravel areas, and will it be designated by signs?
Yes.
And just so that you're all aware, I mean, I heard the comment, it's like an airport. It's not really like an airport. It's, it's a harbor. We have a boat, we go cruising on the boat. We, it's not a big boat, it's thirty feet long and it's comfortable, we really enjoy it. We go cruising down the Cape, we go cruising to the islands, we go cruising to Maine. This year, we're out to Nova Scotia. Seven days, it doesn't, it's, it's a little longer than seven days to get back here from Nova Scotia. Those are the reasons why we're looking for parking. Just a place to put our car where it's gonna be safe, where we aren't gonna have to worry about going against a storm or putting ourselves at risk because we might get a parking ticket or the car might get towed on the way to, on the way home. or the car might get towed on the way to, on the way home to Manchester.
Have we provided you with a solution that you think would work?
Yeah, but it's, it's, I can see how difficult it is for all of you. And it's gonna be a lot of documentation, a lot of patrol work. And I, I just want you to try to understand some of the dynamics. And I appreciate everything that you've all done, so.
I hope that, I hope that this will work for you.
I hope the seven-day limit isn't gonna be a problem.
Oh, which seven-day limit?
Well, so.
You're in September.
A lack of seven days.
The, yeah, so if we're, yeah.
Your Nova Scotia trip.
Yeah, the Nova Scotia trip.
I understand. Seven days, that was Tuck's after Labor Day.
Right, right.
We did not define a timeline, I don't think, at the high school. And I gotta understand.
In our cruising calendar.
You're ten, eleven, twelve days.
We'll be determined by our parking situation here in Manchester.
Right, I understand.
How many spaces are in that lot in the school?
Yeah, a lot, a lot.
I think that should.
Oh, I don't think he's worried, he's not worried about.
July and August is, we're, we're good for July and August.
I also think that again, it's, I can appreciate that. Done cruising, my husband cruised up to Nova Scotia, I, I get that. But I also just don't feel that it's the town of Manchester's responsibility to provide long-term parking for non-residents. I, I, we don't even really do it for residents who go south for the metro. We don't, we don't do that. So we have to take these, our town into consideration first and foremost. And I, I think that, that if somebody wants to go cruising for a longer period of time than what we allot for.
I'd like to make other arrangements.
The, yeah, that's, that's, I mean, just like we do when we go cruising. It's our responsibility.
Trying to summarize this?
Got all that, Debbie?
Um.
Gonna watch the video, watch it.
Okay, so it's, you said when schools got out.
Uh, June thirteenth.
So.
According to the calendar, June thirteenth is the last day of summer.
And I think rather than giving a specific date, we should say.
Last of school.
After the last day of school.
Right. Parking allowed at the school the day after school closes for the season or for the summer. And then parking at the school up to however many days prior to the start of school.
The one day before Labor Day.
Yeah.
And that the spaces on Lincoln Street are available whenever and for however long.
We don't need to state that, though. Because that's, that's.
No one checks how long somebody's gonna park.
There's nothing posted at those spots.
So if you wanted to go for a long cruise in September, that would be the spot to go.
But again, that's, we don't need to include that in a motion.
I didn't, so stress puberty. I didn't hear when Lincoln Street is available for parking overnight.
Now?
How do you know? Thank you.
There are no, yeah, there's no. The chief says there are no signs there.
And that's available for.
Yeah.
Those beach goes a park, they're gonna be rep, so I think.
That's, that's a good thing.
And then that's one motion.
Okay, so. So I'm sorry, make, point of clarification.
Yeah.
Do we have the authority to make a motion for something to move parking along?
No, that's, that's.
I'm sorry.
You're right. Good point. But then our motion is. Yeah, it's to modify, to allow for parking at Tuck's Point for up to one week.
After.
After.
Labor Day.
After Labor Day. Is that?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's, there's, Becky has made a motion to allow parking seven, up to seven.
Seven days.
At Tuck's Point after Labor Day. Is there a second?
I would say seven days.
Seven days.
Second.
Brian.
Yes.
Becky.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Anissa.
Yes.
Yes.
Lincoln Street doesn't require anything.
School, we can't know anything about.
The school. Not us.
Can make its own rules. Sweeney, I think.
We took that off the table.
There's a risk of, of conflict with, and, and since the, the chief has asked for some changes to, that reflect overuse of parking in the Sweeney area. I think probably that's not something.
Sweeney, Sweeney's availability overlaps with the school availability, so we're not really gaining.
Yeah, no, we're not. Did, did, did we already agree on what happens with the, with the spaces out here? Daily parking?
Didn't we already do that?
Did we do that?
We did that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, with the extended time, in other words, I don't know, six to midnight or whatever it was.
Six to midnight, we don't check before eight.
Yeah. Okay, and that covers everything?
That's it.
Yes, Betsy.
Uh, Betsy Ware, South Berwickman. So Sweeney is not gonna be used? Or is Sweeney?
Nobody's gonna check. But Sweeney does not do, does not check resident parking.
There's no posted parking area.
And we don't, that hat doesn't.
The, the problem is that when there are sporting events there that overlap with sporting events at the high school, there's overflow parking from the high school to Sweeney, and then Sweeney overflows into the nearby streets, and so.
So it doesn't sound like Sweeney is a good option.
Sweeney's not.
Sweeney's not.
It's not something I don't think we can promote.
No.
Karen Bennett has her hand up.
Karen, please.
Hello, Karen Bennett, twenty-eighth Lincoln Street. Couple of questions. One is, how many non-residents mooring, non-resident moorings do we got?
About four hundred.
I'm sorry?
About four hundred.
No, non-residents, no.
Two sixty-two.
Forty percent.
I'm sorry, two sixty.
There's six hundred and sixty-five total moorings, four hundred and three are resident. Two sixty-two are non-residents.
Two sixty-eight, I stand corrected.
Non-resident, okay, thank you. Great, thank you. I, I appreciate that information. Are we taking into consideration at the high school, because I live right next to it, the lights? We don't want those lights on all the time because they are, they do shut down and it's a beautiful thing because all the houses around here are impacted by that. So are we taking that into consideration when we're parking at the high school? And my second question is, what about the cost? If we're putting the lights on and we, we got everything going, are we gonna be charging these people for something? Because as a resident, I'm gonna be paying taxes for what's going on at the school, and they're not, so.
The, the lights and the ex, any extra charges, up to the school?
Up to the school, okay. And so should I go to the school to talk about the lighting situation at night?
Yeah, we're talking about the upper back lot that's furthest away from residents.
Okay, all right, that, that is more reasonable, for sure. But I just, you know, there's two hundred and sixty-two non-residents. How many of them are gonna be looking for parking spots? Because we all know there's no parking available. And I don't think we owe anything to non-residents. And honestly, we should be just saying, sorry, we have a parking issue here. You all have to figure it out. It's not our issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I think we, that's a.
My response to, to Ms. Bennett is that last year you sold eighty-two parking spaces or parking platforms to two hundred and sixty-two non-resident mooring holders. Those non-resident mooring holders have worked to find other places because we understand Manchester has, particularly in the center of town, has, has some parking crunches. So we have tried very hard to limit our parking footprint in this community. So the fact that only eighty-two parking platforms were sold last year, I think is very terrible.
Yes.
Can we make a motion to end this?
Oh, I, I think we have talked this one through.
Yeah.
And we, we have designated what we can designate, and, and I think.
Did we vote on the motion?
We voted on the one motion, which was for the.
Extended.
Extended, that was Tuck's extended. That was the only one we really had to vote on.
Not all we need to.
So I think we're set.
I'm sorry, ma'am, Betsy. Betsy, are we gonna be working, did I hear the liaison of the school? All right, so. It's out of my hands, nobody.
I would like to make one more comment, though. Well, no, it's not our responsibility. I do think that we, we don't, the intent is not to be inconsiderate of people who come to our town. That, I, I, that is not the intent at all. I think we're fortunate that people want.
We have had three meetings on this, and we've discussed it for over a half an hour tonight. We, we are trying to find something that works.
Well, this was more in response to the comment Ms. Bennett made. That I, I just think that, I, I wanted to make clear that that, that this sort of isolationism is not our intent.
We're not anti-immigration.
Nope.
It's not really, it's not really fair, Becky, not fair, Becky.
Karen, we want to be recognized and, and I.
Disrespectful is all I have to say. Thank you.
Yes, she is.
Let, no.
That's why.
That is too much from everybody. Let's go on to the next topic.
Okay.
Which is the Harbor Masters office, and we're always gonna have to elevate on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, well.
I think we're gonna miss that, and we don't come next time.
It's nice to see you smile once in a while.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Todd.
Do we need him for, what are we gonna do about the parking?
The road?
The Har- Harold Street.
We already passed that.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
Harbor Master.
Harbor Master Office, as we all know.
And class. Yeah, class. Bayon, I don't see Bayon on.
No, I don't think he's here tonight.
Okay. Thanks, Mom. So my, yeah, and the reason that I wanted the, the classification brought up is that I, I, looking forward with the assistant or deputy harbor master that we're looking at, the qualifications the state is requiring are, have changed, and they're more in line with safety officers, which currently the Harbor Master Office is not designated as public safety. And I think that, that with Peter, the, the town did vote to allow him to have the retirement at, at the F-four, the, the, the same as other.
The previous.
Here means.
Peter Maines, yes.
As the, and, and, but that was done, and correct me, Greg, please. I think that was done at a town meeting and a one-time thing, was that correct?
Well, so, so he was already.
He was a police officer.
A certified officer.
Okay.
So it, it was a logical decision to have him be in Group Four. Going forward with the new rules and regulations, I think a new harbor master should be required to have the academy training, be a public safety officer. And therefore, again, it would make sense to have that position that'd be in Group Four because it is a public safety position.
Well, and even now, what I think that our harbor master does is he can go on a vessel, or she. Yes, I, I, I spent a lot of time chatting about that. He, he, he is able to board and he's able to ticket. So Bayon, and I just chatted with Bayon the other day about this. And the type.
He got a ticket for certain, for certain safety issues.
Correct.
But not, not the full range of.
He can't, he can't, as far as someone speeding through an awake zone.
Right.
He can't pull him over, right?
He can only get away.
Wave at her and say hi.
However, the, the, the next iteration will be able to do that.
Can I ask a question? So I understand where we're going, okay? Potentially, but how did we get from Group One to Group Four for the current situation? That's what I don't understand because I, I just, I'm presuming that each group has a higher level of compensation, or is that not true?
No.
Okay.
It's, it's a timing issue.
Okay. So my other question is, the other harbor mast, current harbor masters. We have some data that talks about, you know, all the harbor masters along the coast. What are their grades? I mean, that would be the very first question I would ask.
It's a big span.
Okay.
And the state, it's new, the requirement that the state is doing.
Right, so I'm totally on board with, if we're gonna post a position new and it has more stringent requirements, I'm on board with potentially the Group Four. That's, that makes total sense. Potentially, however, the current situation is where I'm struggling a bit. And also, I, I hope we don't do anything until we get a proper financial analysis because this is a potentially long-term financial decision for the town. So anything with a financial impact, we ought to give FinCom an opportunity to weigh in on that before we make a final decision.
So if, if, if you wanted to, to change it now to impact the current holder of the office, you would, you would need special legislation. It would have to be a special. So that would take time. It's too late to do that for this legislative session. And the clock is gonna run out, so. So it won't impact, assuming Bayon is okay with a couple more years, he's gonna, he'll have the same, he'll have the same retirement package. Once he hits sixty-five, it's the same.
Okay.
There's no difference.
Got it.
So I, I really think the focus is on the future.
What about the deputies?
So.
The deputy, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do.
Okay, so the deputy would stay in the Group One?
But my question to that point is, is that anybody who is looking at that position expects that they would, at some point in time, become the harbor master? And the decision to join here is, hey, where am I going when I become a harbor master? And if you're Group One as a harbor master and you're, well, I don't know, maybe a deputy's also Group One, he's looking at, say, maybe I'm not gonna apply for this because I don't have all of the advantages that a Group Four would have when I get ostensibly promoted several years down the road. That would be my career path.
So, but I think we wanna make it clear that with the changes that have happened at the state level in terms of qualifications and certification of harbor masters, that requires academy training, just like.
Okay, all right, so my, my question is, is this being driven by Bayon because of Bayon, who Bayon is? Or is this because of the recruiting initiative?
Makes sense.
I, I.
It's really state-driven from the new requirements.
Okay, so this is just regulatory.
Yes.
Oh, okay, all right. I didn't know what the driver was here.
I mean, you know, it certainly has been on Bayon's mind for a number of years. But.
It's not affecting him, really.
Isn't this why we have a police officer?
On the boat.
On the boat.
Yes, exactly.
So we got a Group Four, we got a Group Four person on the boat.
Police enforcement up, uh, on the water.
There are plenty of times when it's only the harbor master on the water.
Right.
Understand, but you can't do certain. Understand, but he can't do certain things, he's only environmental police or a red police officer.
So, all of these towns up and down are gonna have to conform with this at some point?
Not have to, strongly recommend it, I don't believe it's a mandate. I'll have to verify that, but, but you won't be able to have a certified harbor master if they're not academy trained, but I don't know if that precludes you from having harbor master nonetheless.
Okay, would you say certified, certified as group four? Or certified, what does certified mean?
Certified as, as, as a fully trained public safety officer.
Having gone to be attended...
I, I understand, yeah. So, they're all gonna...
So, I mean, honestly, I think, um, when making this type of decision, typically you kind of get some other data and weigh the pros and go, I haven't seen any data other than what's been in our package, and that's not enough for me.
Yeah.
You know, it sounds like we're in a good place, but...
Why don't we agree to ask the finance committee to take this under consideration?
Collect, collect some data.
Collect some data?
Yeah. Prepare an article for the special legislation, making that change.
This is at the state level?
At the state level. And, and, and if we've missed this session already, we have some time, but let's get the information together and this, whatever we need to do to apply for that, and talk about it again in September on the action list.
Yeah, and in the meantime, if there are candidates that are asking questions about this, we're working toward this, and it sounds like it's gonna take some time anyway.
Yes.
But for anybody who is interviewing to be assistant harbor master, this, that's not a relevant question because how this would affect that person is well down the line.
Yes, but it could affect their decision.
Right. That's what I mean, that they need to know the road we're going down.
And, and they need to know that, that before they be, if, before they're promoted to harbor master, they will need to go, go and cruise academy again.
Just a point of clarification, the special act you were referring to, is that to change the classification for the harbor master period, or only to change it for the current incumbent?
Going forward.
Period, okay.
Period, yeah.
But not re, it's not a retro.
So, let us pull together more details and continue the discussion.
I think that's, this is not something that has to be resolved tonight or...
No.
No.
Get the can down the road.
It was to get it on the action list.
Yes.
Okay.
She's going away with my present.
Thank you, my going-away present.
Okay.
Aw, come on.
She's not going anywhere.
I hope she's going lots of places.
I'm sure she is.
All right.
Okay, you can have administrators open.
Yeah, very brief, election drive tomorrow. Certainly is encouraged to vote. In addition to the officers that are being elected, we do have those three ballot questions, two, two related to the one in sewer farm, and the third one related to the school feasibility study for Essex Elementary School. These are not on tap, those are open from seven AM to eight PM at the Memorial School. The, your June third meeting, your next meeting, will be a joint meeting with the planning board and the task force, the MBTA task force, reviewing in detail the proposal. The hope is that that is in...
Actually, our next meeting is Thursday.
That's true, your next regular meeting is June third. Your, your next special meeting is Thursday, the twenty-third, where you'll meet with the planning board to fill a vacancy on the board. And then following that is a public forum on MBTA's own, and then there'll be a presentation again to you on, at your meeting on the third, and the hope is then to wrap up the proposal and ship it off to the state for them to review and hopefully approve what has been proposed.
Is this the last forum?
This is the last forum before it gets shipped off to the state.
That's what I, no, that's what I mean, in other words...
This is the last before the...
Goes to the state.
First it goes after the forum, I think it goes to the planning board, and the planning board turns it over to us on the seventeenth, and then we say, "Yes, I'm good."
Okay, so it's, but it's the last point where the public can head more.
Uh, generally, we accept public comment on issues during our meetings.
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, moving forward with a number of fronts on the Mason Building, including hiring a professional fundraiser through the Friends of the Council on Aging to make that effort underway, meeting with, with the representatives of the nation on the PNS, the purchase and sales agreement, and the condo docs as well, and, and working with legal counsel on both of those. And then we'll also start the process of, of finding an OPM. We have the opportunity perhaps of having that in-house. And depending on how the state budget process proceeds, Representative Farante has put into the House version of the budget some seed money for us, for, for the community, for the senior center. So, with, with, with like that'll survive that process, and we'll have some, some funds there to help get this started.
And didn't you have a couple of residents who had expressed an interest in supporting a senior center a couple of years ago, didn't?
Yes, yeah, most definitely.
Yeah.
So, we'll certainly be reaching out to them soon, and having a concerted effort for that.
Nice.
I have a couple of, and that's what I should've made earlier, but on the off-site, I'd like to have some idea. I have approached the yacht club, I have not been turned down. They would like to know, they would like to know when we would like to do it, the best nights for them, I believe, are Tuesday, maybe Monday. I, I'm, I'm thinking of an evening for five to seven perhaps, sort of the time, to make it possible for people who actually work to try this.
Jeff, Jeff's a worker too, he's a worker, he too.
So, um...
We did it Saturday last time.
Okay.
Yeah, we did it on a Saturday.
I'm not, well, I'm...
Saturday midday, but that might be a little problematic after that.
I'm, you know, I, I think that, uh, something nice about sitting at a yacht club between five and seven, I'm not, doesn't offend me.
So...
Have a bar?
Oh, yeah, but we'd have to hire the bar guy.
For a public meeting, yeah?
I can put in your chip though, right?
So, Tuesday and Thursday are days when the club doesn't regularly have events in the evening, is either of those at sometime in mid-June?
Okay, it's mid-June, I'm away, I'm out of the country from June fifth, coming back on the eleventh.
Okay.
It's, are we still talking evenings?
I was thinking...
Yeah, okay.
Thirteen, eighteen, twenty.
Maybe sitting ends of, of June, uh, what, twentieth?
I prefer, if I had a preference, it'd be Tuesdays, 'cause Thursdays looks like summertime, that's beginning of the weekend.
Okay, yes, that's true.
We all have our schedules.
It is, isn't it?
Yes, it is. Wonder if it has something...
Yeah, it's like Friday Junior.
Yeah. I will, I will, I will talk to the club and see if we can come up with something after June eleventh, um, that, where we can, we can meet. And the other, as most of you are, many of you are aware, June twelfth is going to be Sue Thorn Day, and there will be a party from four to six at the Jagger House to thank her for forty years of service to the town. And I'm going to ask that Becky put on the agenda for the third, they have a proclamation declaring June twelfth, it's Sue Thorn Day in Manchester.
And all you got was a lousy chair.
Yeah, four to six.
I think she probably...
Probably has a couple.
Probably.
Probably holds a, uh, uh, I don't know.
It's all around her whole dining table.
She's moving to Brooksbury Village, so the, a chair seemed like the wrong thing. The Friends of Trees donated a tree and...
That's nice.
She has, she has gone to, it was planted, and she has gone to stand next to it and get her picture taken.
I think she's already moved.
I think, yeah.
Like, this week?
Yeah.
Within the week.
Well, she's, I, I think it was a gradual transition.
Yeah, I would agree.
But, so those are my notes, and I would welcome a motion.
Someone moved to adjourn.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. It's gonna be yes, it's gonna be yes, yeah, yes.
And a yes.
And don't leave before your sight.
Right.
Signatures of the day.
A few more signatures, Becky, then, yeah, okay, four more.
Hey.
Thank you all.